Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for showing up for the Committee of the Whole meeting on February 20, 2019. Is there any declarations of conflicts interested in this agenda circulated? None? Okay, item number three. We can't make any motions in Committee of the Whole. You have the agenda in front of you. Is there any additions or deletions? So we're going to move forward with the agenda circulated. Item number four, the RENs are going to have a presentation by Andy-Lee LeBlanc and Ron Smith at 11:00. So we'll move on to item number five. Business arising from the minutes, 5.1, December 7, 2018, NSFM Board of Directors Minutes. And on there, we'll move on to item number 5.2. It was a concern that I had in regards to the NSFM board report from -- this is referred from the January 9 Committee of the Whole meeting as soon as I get this open. I had a concern on here in regards to item number four. If you all have that open, in regards to the board report, there was a bunch of items in there, which number one was LPP-ANS presentation. Item number two was the PVSC presentation. Item number three was the name change that the board approved a motion to request the Governor General -- or the Governor and Council make order in council to change the name of Nova Scotia Union and Nova Scotia Municipalities to reflect on the desired name of the organization, the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities. And item number four, provincial activity policy. I'm going to read it aloud. This said, "The board reviewed and amended the NSFM political activity policy. The policy specifies a board member must take leave of absence when nominated for provincial election. When nominated for federal election, the board member must take a leave of absence when the writ is dropped." So my concern with this was, number one, what was the policy originally? Number two, why was the policy changed? And number three, why would it not be the same for a board member to take a leave of absence for nominated for provincial election where it should be the same, in my opinion, that if a board member is nominated for a federal election, it should be the same? As it says here, it's only they have to take a leave of absence when the writ is dropped. Now, I don't know if the rest of you have any concerns, but I personally have a concern with this. And I'm wondering if anyone has any input or if they're not really concerned about this. It's up to you. So hearing none, I guess we're not going to move this forward to council. It's going to be standing as it is, but I just thought I would like to express my concerns over this policy change in there. But since apparently I have no support, we will not move it to council to make any motions or recommendations. Counselor Cushing.
Yes, I appreciate what you're saying there, if you were Cunningham, but I'm not familiar with this type of policy at all, so that's why I really have no comment on it.
No, that's fine.
It's there and it's there, but that's all I can say.
Counselor Cunningham.
I mean, if there's a concern, I'm the same as Counselor Cushing. I'm uncertain as to what the policy was and what it was changed to, so therefore I don't -- is it in the document?
No, it's not.
I'm not aware. So maybe we could bring it back to the next Committee of the Whole and with the -- perhaps staff can look at the if it's concerned. We can have a conversation at that juncture to -- but I mean, you have to have the -- I can't be concerned with the policy change if I don't know what the policy change is, right?
Well, that was one of my big concerns, what the policy change was from and why it got changed to this. That was just my curiosity that was sparked. Counselor LeBlanc?
Anyway, just to explain the last sentence of the -- I still don't understand.
The last sentence of this is, "When nominated for a federal election, a board member must take a leave of absence when the election writ is dropped." So that means when the Governor General says that there's going to be election in, I believe it's 30 days, that that's when, if any board member, if they're nominated for a political party, that they have to step aside from their board duties. But if you're on a provincial -- if you run for a provincial election, the minute that you're nominated, which could be in well in excess of a year, you have to step away from your board duties. That's -- do you understand?
So federally, they only have to wait 30 days?
Yes, they have to step away from the duties of the board.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I think simply we ask our CAO to get the information for us and we bring it to the next, just to actually see what the policy changes were, if any, and we can have a conversation. It's on the agenda. Because it's on the agenda, I don't think it's wise to just -- if it was important enough to put on the agenda initially, it's important enough to get the information and have a conversation next Committee of the Whole, so.
So I guess that's the direction of council, to ask staff to find out what the policy was before and possibly some reasoning for the changes, so. Yeah, I can agree with that. So we'll defer this item to the next Committee of the Whole, provided the CAO can find or our staff can find any information regards this. Of course, sometimes it takes a little bit of time to get any information from any government organization, so we'll just have it as an ongoing item until we have some information in front of us. Thank you very much, council. Item number 5.3, Port Maitland Beach Facilities. Counselor Durkey.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Approximately a year ago, we had discussed, meeting with the Lands and Forests, to discuss improvements at the Port Maitland Beach site. At present, there are outhouses and a couple of wooden structures for change rooms. And considering in the Ray Ivony report that we want to increase the number of tourists coming here, we need to look at improving -- or not we, but the province needs to look at improving some of the facilities at the beaches. So I'm aware that Greg, our CFO, and I believe YASTA did some research into looking at facilities across the province and have some information about where there are other beaches with better facilities. Since we have a new minister in Lands and Forests, now Ian Rankin, I would like to suggest that we have a meeting with Lands and Forests to see where we might be able to move forward with some improvements there. I've already spoken to Zach with regards to that, and he felt that it was an important issue, and he has already informed Minister Rankin that we -- that the municipality would probably be getting in touch with them to have that discussion.
Counselor Cushing.
Yes, I remember our first conversation of this. Counselor Durkey, you probably know better than anybody, what shape are those so-called washrooms, change rooms? Are they pretty good shape? Are they well maintained?
Well, they're well maintained, I can tell you, because the maintenance gentleman does a great job in trying to take care of them, but he has been saying for a while now that it's time for some improvements. They're just old outhouses.
There you go.
And to keep them clean is extremely difficult at this point, and he has had noted a large increase in the number of people using the beach, and it's time. They've been there for a long, long time.
Yep, thank you. Also, if I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe from some wording that we had before, I can't pronounce the right words, I'm a little -- just getting over some zickness, I'm a little shaky. Some wording that we had in some previous meetings that a lot of other provincial beaches around with washroom facilities and changing facilities were a much higher standard than what is in Port Maitland. Is that cracked or not?
Not really. There are a lot of beaches with poor facilities as we have, but there are some, and I guess if we reach out to YASTA or our CFO, that they have information. They did quite a bit of research to kind of look at what -- which beaches had better facilities and felt that there was definitely a case for improvement at our own facility. In addition, I had spoken to Jason DeVoe, Collins' assistant, with regards to this and because we were discussing the whole port maintenance area. And he felt too, there could be some federal money that would be available for a project such as this. So I think our -- what I'd like to do, to recommend, is that we make a motion at our regular meeting to set up a meeting with Lands and Forests to review the facilities.
Yeah, and I -- just to continue on, I have the letter and I read the letter, and I certainly don't want this to be not followed up on, so when it comes, what's it say, "The present mandate for the department is maintaining existing -- however, when we start discussing on park improvements during our planning cycle, we will take your request into consideration." So I don't want to forget that. I think we should keep that front and foremost and know when that review is coming up so we can have our say on what the Lands and Forests --
Through.
I think it's a very important subject there that we should really pay attention to.
Thank you. It's been a year since we -- this roughly a year, and we'd like to find out where they're going and make recommendations.
Any more discussion? I have a couple of points on that, if no one else has. Back in February 28, 2018, because when I seen this agenda item back on our agenda, it sparked my memory as Counselor Cushing had mentioned, on February 28, 2018, YASTA was asked to gather info regarding the park services that were available in Southwest Nova and compare those to other light parks across the province. Did we ever get that information? And then it also, in that discussion on February 28, it also says, "Following receipt of that information, a meeting will be pressed with an official to the N.R. to discuss this." So I would like to personally, before we move any farther on this, is to give that information in front of us before we request a meeting to move forward with this, because I do believe that, yes, the services there are deplorable, for the lack of better terms right now, but I also believe that we should have the information in front of us, because I do believe what people's suspicions are about the conditions of the facilities there to be true compared to other areas in the province that the province owns, that they are deplorable. So I think that we should have that information in front of us, and then we request the meeting in that regard. So I guess maybe we should first direct staff to ask YASTA to, if they have any information on that, to please forward it to council for possible discussion then, so. Are you clear, Victoria, what you'd like, what council would like? All right, is there any more discussion on that item? Hearing none. Item number six, Old Business, 6.1, e-voting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if you remember, council had asked that staff begin the process of taking a look at what e-voting could or might look like as we have a ramp up to the 2020 municipal elections. So I met with staff because the issue had been looked at in the past by this council and got a debriefing on what work had been done, how far along in the process staff had gotten. And in fact, a complete review and analysis of e-voting was not completed the first time around. Partway through the process, council directed staff to stop looking at it. There was a sense at the time that pure e-voting would not serve enough of the residents because of the technology challenges, and the feeling was, even though the analysis wasn't complete, that likely the cost of running e-voting and traditional ballot voting might be more than council was willing to even look at. So the work was stopped before it was finished, and knowing that our technology challenges are not solved and likely won't be solved until after the next municipal election, I wanted a sense from council before we invest the time and resources again. I want a sense from council, and you can be thinking about this at Committee of the Whole in preparation for council, a sense of what's council's willingness in terms of having traditional paper ballots and doing the e- and telephone voting, because likely in order to achieve greater voter turnout, we'll have to look at different modes of casting ballots. So I wanted to bring it forward at Committee of the Whole, first of all, to get it on the record that I had begun the work, and secondly, to get council to begin to think about their mandate and how far they might be willing to go before we invest time and money on the research again.
Counselor Cunningham.
Yes, I think e-voting, I mean, obviously, we do have our technology problems, but lots of folks do have smartphones, and they often come within range, obviously, so I think it's a different situation than it was even four years ago today. The technology is very pervasive, and I know some areas don't have the access to cellular or landlines, you know, fiber, all those types of technologies in the area, but I think it's worthwhile looking at it. It may also be worthwhile looking at somehow polling the public as to what they want, because ultimately, they are the electors, we're not. I think I'd like to be careful about us making the decision in the absence of knowing their wishes. I mean, I think a lot of people want the ability to be able to e-vote, and therefore, I'm favorable at this point to the idea, certainly. And so what I think is perhaps staff maybe for the council meeting may look at a way of polling the public to get an idea of where they sit, because they're aware of the technological barriers and all those types of things that they have personally or don't have personally, and I think that would be useful information before we decide to spend public money, know what the public wants and is asking for.
Counselor Cushing.
I can appreciate having the subject of e-voting put there, and Counselor Cunningham certainly alluded to the technical difficulties, the challenges that are out there. We have technical challenges sitting around this table at times, so my main concern is the seniors who look forward to getting out and going and placing their mark on a paper ballot, that they've done that for years, they look forward to it. A lot of them don't understand the e-voting, don't understand what it means, and I think even if we went out to the public and said, you know, "This is what, you know, we'd like to do, what was your opinion?" I don't think there's going to be a lot of seniors who's going to respond to that, because I, you know, and I'm just trying to be upfront, because I, you know, I deal with seniors in numerous activities, and I know what they like. They like things the way they were, they like to have the opportunity. Believe it or not, when they go vote, it's a chance for them to get out of the house, go do something, talk with their neighbors, and, you know, and just be able to get out. If we eliminate that type of activity for the seniors, I think it's going to be disappointing for them, and I think it's going to just add another burden for them to say, "The heck with it, nobody's going to listen to me anyway." So that's my two cents worth.
Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I personally would like to see a combination of e-voting and paper voting, and I agree that with Counselor Cushing, that yes, seniors do like to get out, they will prefer to use the old method, but I think that we would absolutely increase voter turnout if we could use a combination of both, and I think you're looking at improving or increasing the number of younger people who'd be interested in voting if we had e-voting available to them.
Is there any more discussion on that? I was the one that originally brought up this e-voting, and I do believe that we should have a combination, personally, this is my own belief, that we should have a combination between the traditional style ballots and the e-voting. Obviously, there is technical challenges out, especially in the district that I represent because of the internet service, but there's all different types of e-voting. Now, you could might be able to do it on your smartphone, you might be able to do it on a landline, and I personally just wanted a small brief on the possibility of what an e-voting would cost. I don't know if it costs $5,000, I don't know if it costs $50,000. And my original thought was too, that maybe that we have someone come in that, whether it be a CAO, municipal clerk, someone from another municipality that's gone through e-voting before. We do know that there has been some issues, been noted over the past at least two elections. I know there was some issues in the municipality of Argyle about people confused on where they voted and the e-voting tallies and stuff like that. There was concerns about fraud. E-voting, to me, would be new. I do agree with Counselor Cunningham that maybe there should be some sort of input from the public, whether they wanted it or not. Maybe this is something that we could have on our newsletter, just to go to this site, would you be in favor of, or would you use e-voting? We're still roughly two years out from an election, and I thought it was prudent that we get started on this now. I'd like to at least know the preliminary costs of what it would be. I don't know if it costs X amount of dollars per voter in a municipal unit, say there's $10,000, does a company charge $5 per person to have their name on a list and all that other stuff? I really don't even know what it costs now if the cost is what we consider quote-unquote outrageous, and we also do have the figures on what the cost is just for the paper ballots. Just simple things like that. We don't -- I don't know if I want to get staff to expend a whole bunch of time at this juncture. Maybe we could defer this to the next Committee of the Whole or even to the next council meeting, just to have just a few of those small figures, just to see if council wants to move forward in that respect, or even if we want to have it as a place where you can go online, people can get online to answer on a website, like a poll. I'm not sure. To me, e-voting is totally new. I know other units do it, but what kind of surprises me is we don't see it yet in the federal or provincial elections. So that's a little bit concerning. If e-voting is so great and they want to get people out, yeah, there's a lot more people that vote in provincial and federal elections, but why is not the federal and provincial governments move forward with that? Don't know. Counselor Cunningham?
Yeah, I do know that the province of Ontario, in their last round municipal elections, I think they were almost wholly, is my understanding, they did have e-voting available to people and just wanted to clarify. When I said e-voting, it wasn't having the absence of a paper ballot, because I mean, obviously, for us, that's, first of all, we don't have the technology available to people, so that would be a barrier. So I think, I think obviously, it's the dual solution, that you'd have paper ballot available, but e-voting available as well. So I think it's a matter of maybe doing, I mean, not an in-depth survey, but some kind of survey from the public quickly, and also just some preliminary estimates of the general cost. I mean, if you're looking at a Class D, kind of like a, you know, analogous to a Class D-type estimate for capital, right? So just knowing basically what it would cost, because I'm thinking that most people want to use technology to cast a vote now. I mean, it's, I think it's just a fact of life. It's easier, and I think it will get the participation rates up and so forth, so it's got a lot of positives. So I think maybe that next Committee of the Whole, perhaps, staff could bring a short report with some of those details. I know we want to have perfect information to make, and I understand that, perfect information to make the decision around, but a little bit more information, I think we can, including the cost, I think we can have a conversation and decide which way to go.
Is the council is agreeable on that? Move it forward to the next Committee of the Whole with a brief in that regards? I do believe it's prudent that we're moving forward with this now and not waiting to the last minute, like a few months, or not a few months, because obviously, we've got to hire returning officers and all that other stuff, but at least we're looking to move forward on that. Item number seven, Bylaw and Policy Discussion, item 7.1.1, Tax Exemption Bylaw, T-082-03.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a series of bylaws and policies to bring forward to you this morning to discuss and seek recommendations to council. The first is the tax exemption bylaw. If you recall, I had some discussions with council last year on properties that we either wholly own or jointly own with other municipalities for the specific purposes of delivering municipal services. And so in the proposed amendment to the tax exemption bylaw, the change is found in Schedule A, which is the last page of the bylaw, which lists our exempt properties. And you'll see highlighted there the addition of four properties, which includes the Yarmouth International Airport Operations and the Wind Energy Project, which we are partnered with Argyle and the Town of Yarmouth on all of those properties. So when I approached PVSC, the feeling was that within their act, having it deemed non-taxable didn't exactly fit. Their legal opinion was that it didn't exactly fit, but under the MGA, because we're using those lands for municipal services and they're wholly municipally owned, that we could add them to our schedule in our tax exemption bylaw. So, Mr. Chairman, I submit that to you this morning for recommendation to council.
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Cunningham.
Sorry.
Well, sorry, Counselor Durkey.
I would recommend that we forward this to our regular council meeting for approval.
So it would be first reading, Counselor Durkey?
First reading, correct.
Since we don't make motions, Committee holds, everyone agreeable to that? All right, thank you very much. Item 7.2, Flight Policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is policy, so a motion of council can make this change. What I noted was, council is intentionally silent with respect to policy on proclamations, and by practice, council doesn't make proclamations. And so as part of my mandate to review the policy and the bylaw framework for council, I noted just a little bit of a conflict that by having a policy indicating how council will deal with requests to raise flags of groups on our flagpoles in front of our administration building, it seemed to me that raising a flag was in effect making a statement or a proclamation, so I raise it for council's discussion and consideration, that if they wish to remain consistent with respect to proclamations, that it may be prudent to strike this policy from the record.
Yeah, I'd recommend that we move this to council with a written recommendation from the CAO to strike it, because if there's a conflict there and that's not our practice, then certainly we should have that, take that action.
Any other discussion on that? Counselor Cushing.
Yeah, excuse my ignorance, but I'm not quite fully understanding. You want to take the flight policy away? Is that what you're saying?
I'm suggesting that because council intentionally does not make proclamations, raise raising another group's flag on your flag pole is actually a visual proclamation. And so I'm suggesting to you that you may have a slight conflict in your practice there and bring it forward for your consideration.
Okay. What is the wishes of council? Wish to move this to the regular council meeting for discussion and possible?
For discussion, I need to read this. You want to?
Yes.
With the caveat, with the recommendation, rational for striking, I think that's the reason.
I listen to the CAO and I'm on the fence here. I do agree that we don't make proclamations or stuff, but I think there has to be some sort of policy in regards to, and make it very clear about when we lower the flag for half-mast. I'm just looking for that section in there about when it's. Flags in front of the municipal administration building will be lowered to half-mast on the day of passing until sunset or the day of a funeral in memory of the following people: a sovereign member of the sovereign's immediate family, governor general of Canada, prime minister of Canada, former prime minister of Canada, lieutenant governor of the province of Nova Scotia, member of parliament for the municipality District of Yarmouth, a current member of the Legislative Assembly of Nova Scotia who represents the municipality of Yarmouth riding, a warden of the municipality District of Yarmouth, and a former warden, a municipality District of Yarmouth employee. I do believe that we should have at least that part of the policy in regards to flag lowering, and also, there's a caveat in there in keeping with the federal and provincial protocol on following occasions, sunrise, sunset, remembrance day, day of mourning for persons killed and injured in the workface on the 28th. I do believe that they should be there. I'd like a little bit more discussion on this, possibly Counselor Cunningham?
Oh, it's me, sorry, I was first.
I'm sorry, for some reason, I don't see your mic flashing, I see Trevor's, and I don't know if Derek, now I see it's on. Counselor Durkey, sorry.
No problem. I would like to just review this a little bit more and do some of my own fact-finding research on this, to confirm that this would be a good idea or not a good idea at this point. So my concern is if someone comes and asks us to raise the flag, then are we immediately saying no? Or is there a discussion around that? Maybe your CAO could confirm how that would?
So thank you, Counselor Durkey. To the deputy warden's point is there are actually provincial and federal protocols which provide a framework for council putting flags at half-mast. That's already in place for you to fall back on to justify your actions with respect to flags at half-mast. The point you raised, Counselor Durkey, is exactly the crux of the argument. By having this policy, you actually don't have a mechanism for choosing which flags you'll raise and which flags you won't. You're saying the process for getting a flag on your pole.
Okay.
Counselor Cunningham, sorry?
Right, so, given all that, and it may just be that we want to take this back to our policy committee first, rather than going right to the, so we could have a little bit more conversation about it. And maybe that we just simply want a policy that references the federal and provincial guidelines and so forth, and so maybe staff could do a little bit of work, take it to the working committee, which is the policy committee.
We don't have that anymore. We're not having a, we're, I believe?
It's a staff committee. It's a staff committee that, yep, here's this discussion, works on the document and brings it back here until you feel comfortable recommending it to council.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Any more discussion? I personally think that we at least should say, if there's going to be a flag policy, it could be just that we follow the federal and provincial guidelines. At least it should be noted somewhere where someone can at least look it up, that at least they know that we at least follow that. Well, I seen Counselor Durkey, you're not sure, I'm not sure either.
No, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either, but I think staff should do some due diligence, as Counselor Cunningham suggested it, and bring something forward back, so at least we'll have a little bit of time to think about it. And I'm not sure either, to tell you the truth, so. Item number 7.1.3, heritage property bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my color printer, the essence of the change in this recommendation from staff is that by practice, the structure of the committee has not been what's in the current bylaw in force. So under Part IV, on Page 1, you'll see, if you're looking at an electronic version, you'll see it highlighted in yellow, that the committee shall consist of, eight is struck and seven is replaced, members, two, with three being struck, of whom shall be appointed from the municipal council. So what I'm recommending for a change to go forward as first reading to council actually reflects the practice. So I think a change happened somewhere along the way and the bylaw wasn't updated. And that's it, that's the only change.
What is the wishes of council? You wish to move this forward to a regular council meeting? And make a decision on it then? Counselor Durkey?
Got me this time.
Got you this time.
Sure, I'll make a recommendation to move this forward for first reading at our regular council meeting.
All right. Thank you. Item number 7.1.4, code of council brief.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So if you recall, council had directed me to work on supporting you with drafting a code of conduct. The feeling was that we would want to work with the NSFM on their work around code of conduct, and certainly make sure we mirror the provincial standard that we were endeavoring to set. It seems as though the work of the NSFM is going to take a little bit longer to complete. They've had some changes in leadership, and they're actually using an extremely comprehensive, thorough process in this, and so it's worth the while to invest the time. What that means is, is that we won't have a foundational document to look at for this council for quite some time. When you were elected and you were sworn in, each of you individually signed a code of conduct, and I would submit to you that that serve as your commitment to your standard of conduct at this point. When the work of the NSFM is done, if there's a difference between the code of conduct you've signed and the code of conduct the NSFM suggests, then you can look at that then, you can discuss the differences, and you can make decisions on how you want to move forward at that time. So basically, we can review the current code of conduct and adopt it as a policy. It's not a policy, you each one have just signed it. Or we could wait for the draft from the NSFM, or we could do nothing as well. So whatever the wishes of council.
All right, Counselor Durkey, your mic is still on, so Counselor Cunningham?
All right, I submit the recommendation of the CAO's a good one. I don't think we'd want to invent the wheel and then only have it reinvented by the NSFM. I guess our original thought was to work hand-in-hand with them to adopt a province-wide code of ethic, provided we can agree with that when it comes to fruition. So I'd say that we take the recommendation, we leave those signed documents in place to govern our conduct and wait until something new is developed and we can look at it at that time, seems reasonable. Thank you.
Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too agree with the CAO's recommendations on waiting for the NSFM code of conduct. Thank you.
Any more discussion? So I guess that's the wishes of council, move forward and wait for the NSM to possibly make any change, move forward your recommendations. Thank you. All right, since I see Evan and Angelique here, I think it's prudent that we move forward with that, we only have one other agenda item after this, so. Could you come up forward, please? Sit right there, there's a red button you can push.
Thank you.
I can't see these, oh, there you go.
There.
There you go. Thank you, Angelique and Evan, for coming in. I'm assuming that Victoria needs to plug in a?
Yep, Michael B. right here.
USB drive to get us up and running?
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for inviting us in. Always happy to come in and it feels like we have a lot to tell you. So I think we have about 20 minutes? Okay, so we're going to try and move through the information that we do have. We have a few slide decks to show you, one you have received beforehand, so you should be familiar with. But as our slide, our presentation is being loaded up, I'll take the opportunity maybe just to speak about the Western REN and what it is that we do. So we do regional economic development, as you all know, from Barrington right around to Digby. So what we do is on two levels. So generally speaking, economic development, we're looking at making the local business environment, the environment better for businesses who are already here and businesses who are looking to come in. And then we do also offer some direct services to clients. So mainly to small business owners or companies, the management of companies. We have three programs, and I did bring a booklet for you that I'll leave behind today. So three specific programs currently that are client-facing, so we have our Business Now program. So Matt Trask is the one who is our Business Now lead. That's a business visitation program, and we like to see it as a relationship-building tool with the businesses who are in the region. We want to have that relationship with them, that we know how they're doing, we know what their needs are, if they're looking at any possibilities of growing, and we then refer them out to our partners and the supports that are in the region to make sure that we're helping them grow, and if they are encountering any obstacles, we're helping them move through those. We also have our connector program, so that's for people who are relatively new to the region, who may be looking for employment, who are looking to build a network. In small communities like ours, network building is really important. Oftentimes, there are jobs out there that are available, but they're not necessarily posted. So it's helping new arrivals to the region build their network. So we have both connectees, who are the ones looking for the employment or the opportunities, and we have connectors. So those are people in the region who are, who know a lot of other people, who are there to help them build that network. And then our last client-facing program that we currently have is the Atlantic Immigration Pilot. So that's the employer-facing immigration program, so employers who may be thinking about hiring immigrants for workforce, for their business, that program is there for them. So for any of those programs, you can reach out to us, any one of us at the REN, but you can find the information on our website, westernren.ca. So today, we're here to talk to you about some of the work that we've done over the past few years, and actually, when Victoria was with us, this was one of her projects that she was leading. So Victoria, at any time, if you have anything to add, please do, please jump in. So essentially, early on in our first strategy, it was identified that as a region, when we're talking about the region, that we do have unique assets, and we do have potential to develop, and we want to work around these assets. So at the end of the day, what we call this is our value proposition. So what's unique about the region? What's really niche? And what is it that we can tap into and do more of, have the businesses who are local do more of, and have people who may be on the outside looking in, give them a case as to why it makes sense to invest in Western Nova Scotia? So we put time and energy into building this value proposition, and that's what we want to talk to you about today, and how that work is going to impact you when it comes to the decisions that you're making as well. Sure. Do we have, yeah, sure. Do we have, how do I get my slides? There will be a keyboard. Okay, perfect. Yep. Thanks. So for the sake of time, I'm going to kind of jump into the slide deck, and then it will come up on the screen when it's ready. So the work that we're doing was really designed to look at numerous bodies of work that were already complete throughout the region, and taking it and packaging it in perhaps a way that was different than what had been seen before. So a lot of it is about crafting the narrative, telling the story as to why this is a place, why you would come here and do business, and identifying those opportunities. And again, the Western REN, our region, is really to quarterback some of those opportunities, so that's what entrusts us in this work. So when we thought about what sectors are we really going to develop and talk about in position as our value proposition? So when you talk about Western Nova Scotia, of course, our natural resources. So it does make sense for us to talk about fisheries, to talk about seafood harvesting and processing specifically, forestry, and renewable energy. So we have our more traditional sectors, but we also have some emerging sectors in the region. So renewable energy, when we think about the work that's been done in Digby, they're positioning around smaller-scale tidal energies. So we already have some knowledge and some assets that are here, and when we speak about forestry, we wanted to look as well how it does relate to renewable energy. So that drove the work. And we wanted essentially a roadmap when it came to potential foreign direct investment. Where do we need to focus to essentially achieve the most success? So the work enabled us to create that roadmap, and the idea is that the region, so when I speak about the region, ourselves, all of our partners, including all of the municipalities, how are we going to work together with this messaging to get to those opportunities? And there were a few things that were essential when we were crafting this work. One of it was, it had to be regional in the approach. We had to do it in coordination with Nova Scotia Business, Inc., so they were active participants in this work, and they were on our project committees as we went along. And also, we had to look at existing strategies that are out there. So we looked at the Atlantic growth strategy, and we looked at some of the ACOA initiatives as well. So we were really looking to augment some of the work that they are doing. So in terms of the consultants that we worked with on this project, there were a number of different consultants. We worked with Group ATN, Wavtech, Location Strategies, and Amplify FDI. So some of these consultants were experts in the foreign direct investment work. So they know exactly what site selectors are looking for, they know the language that they speak, and one thing that they learned early on when they started working for us was that very little was known about Western Nova Scotia in the marketplace. So that's really what we were aiming to change. And the other important fact that I alluded to is the fact that we have these, we have our natural resources, our more traditional sectors, but how do we bring that into the emerging economy as well? So the objectives of the project, to create awareness of Western Nova Scotia, build interest to investigate Western Nova Scotia in these targeted sectors, and then generate demand for the FDI opportunities. And I mentioned previously, the activities are not exclusive to new business coming in, it's also, so some of our local businesses are able to identify and maybe leverage some of the opportunities as well on a regional scale. So the approach for the work was really modeled on sound business practices. We wanted to see what really had the most realistic market demand. We wanted to see what really had the most realistic market demand and potential while moving into the new economy. So moving into activities that can be transitioned out to other sectors. But for the time being, we wanted to focus on what we have here now. So it was about leveraging regional assets and clusters. And the idea was, and if you think about the different sectors, and if I had a slide, it would be easier to explain for those of you who don't have the deck. But if we have fisheries, we have forestry, and we have renewable energy, where do they all intersect? And we knew that that was the sweet spot, where we have to do some work moving forward. So where they intersect, we're looking at the newer economy. We're looking at data analytics. How can we incorporate that into these industries? Bioscience, and we also looked at some infrastructure pieces in there. And I think it's really important to note that we are transitioning into a new economy. It really is, in terms of pivotal points in our economic history, it is a revolution. I was speaking with the president of NSCC this morning, and he actually referred to it as the Fourth Industrial Revolution, where we're going to be moving towards robotics, automation. And the thing is about this kind of technology is that it is going to be accessible to small businesses and even microbusinesses. So it's going to help them expand their reach as well, which is very positive for a region like ours. So what we came up with in terms of our value proposition... So the slide deck doesn't seem to be working, but I think you all have it on paper. Okay. The value proposition that emerged from that was all around Western Nova Scotia being a green hub. So some of the taglines that the consultants came out with are... The concept is, is that they're like Lego. So you can use them depending on the marketplace that you're in, the industry that you're working with. And you can use them interchangeably, you can stack them. But that's how they're meant to be used. So Western Nova Scotia, where the bioeconomy, data analytics, and sustainability meet, is the overall statement. And some of those Lego blocks, if you will, where sustainability meets profitability. It's really important for us as a region, when we're looking at our natural resources, that they are harvested in a sustainable fashion. We're looking at critical mass for renewable energy, sustainability in seafood, forestry, and renewable energy. And also, and this is nothing new, we've been lauding this for years, the fact that there's unmatched market access. So we connect New England, Eastern Canada, and Europe. So we're really ideally located for those marketplaces as well. We, there are some external factors that are working in the favor of Western Nova Scotia. So there's profound global economic and social factors that are driving global food supply. So it's going to be important to feed into that global food chain. There's rising demand for fish from China, other Southeast Asian countries. And also in terms of renewable energy and biomass energy products, that is on the rise as well. So the expectation worldwide is that these projects will increase from 35% in 2012 to 64% by 2040. And the assets that we have, that we're very proud of, we have world-renowned fisheries industry, we have the renewable energy piece, we have the Bay of Fundy with the highest tidal range in the world. We learned some facts while we did the work that we knew, but when, the way that the consultants presented them to us, we had never seen them quite like that before. In terms of solar energy generation in the region, our potential is on par with Southern Ontario, which is Canada's leader. Forestry inventory, we're part of Canada's biomass reserves, the largest in the world. And only 0.78% of Nova Scotia's forests are harvested annually. Okay. It would be slide number six that I'm wrapping up. So moving on to slide number seven now, the opportunity themes and challenges. Yes, yep. Okay. So the opportunity themes that are emerging, I mentioned sustainability, bioscience, data analytics, the expanding economies in China and Southeast Asia that we already see our industries are taking advantage of, growth drivers of tomorrow's economies. So not just today, but how we're transitioning into the new economy, the value-added products and services. With all that being said, of course, there are challenges as well within the region. Some of those challenges is when we look at the research assets that we have in bioeconomy and data analytics. We do have those assets provincially. We have an extremely rich university system and college system as well. But they are near, but not necessarily in the region, all of these assets. We need capacity building within the region and resource and technology transformation. So I'll talk about some of those a little bit more. So the next slide, the critical infrastructure improvements that are required. So these are foundational challenges to all the opportunities that are there. And I want to really underscore how critical this is to our region moving forward. So for the whole economy rolling forward, this is pivotal. So this isn't news to you. We hear this. I've told you this probably sitting in this seat before. What we hear back from businesses, the number-one issue is the talent retention and attraction piece. So finding an adequate workforce. It doesn't matter what the industry is, the size of the company, what they do. We hear that pretty much across the board. Broadband connectivity, internet, which I know you're familiar with that as well. We've been putting a lot of time and energy into that as well. And then the extension of the power grid capacity. There are limitations with our power grid. And Evan is going to be speaking in a little bit more detail about, a little bit about what the problem is and how we propose to address it short term. And better transportation links, which again, I know you're aware of that. And so these are all critical to us moving forward with opportunities. And you will recognize that the Western REN has put a lot of time and energy into a lot of these foundational challenges that we face, and we will continue to do so. And another thing I'd like to mention before moving on to the next slide is the important role that our chambers of commerce play across the region and also our Board of Trades. So we work with many of them, from Barrington to Digby. And they have a voice, and they have an advocacy role that the Western REN doesn't necessarily have. And I think that the more that we can all work in partnership with our chambers and boards of trade to be advocating on a uniform message that we have that approach that shows that we know what our opportunities are and we know what's standing in the way. So let's advocate for some of those through our chambers and boards of trades as well. And what came out of this work is really a high-level representation of some opportunities. In the slide deck, it's extremely small and it's difficult for you to read. But we do talk about the different sectors, and there are priorities or opportunities that are identified, either high opportunities, something that is in the medium term, or maybe a little bit farther out. So just to give you some examples, for example, in the fisheries, cold storage facilities, the need for more cold storage facilities is an opportunity that's been identified. In forestry, district heating policies. And in renewable energy, we talk about distributed energy systems and energy storage. And again, Evan's going to be unpacking that just a little bit more for you in a minute. So the idea with this piece is where we need to roll up our sleeves along with your staff, all the municipalities and towns in the region. And we need to use this work to help plan strategically, to help inform you in the work that you're doing as well. So when you're looking at your infrastructure projects, when you're looking at your different strategies, that this work is taken into consideration as well. So that's one of the things that I would ask of you, and I'm appreciative of the time that's given that your staff works with us on some of the projects that we're developing. So Victoria, I handed out to you the Why Western Nova Scotia piece. So this is a tool that we've been using in terms of potential investors who are interested in Western Nova Scotia. We've been using it with a lot of our partners. We've been getting some really positive feedback on the work. But what we're most proud of with this piece is that it is written in that FDI site-selection language, and it speaks to them, it presents the information in a way that really resonates with them. That's the way they want to see it packaged. It speaks about us, and everything that is said in here is based on fact. So this is actually the opportunities. It lays the tracks, I guess, for the opportunities. So I encourage you all, when you're out there and you're having your meetings and you're in various, I know you take part in a lot of different committees, and you're out there, I encourage you to use this tool to help promote the region and tap into us to help kind of frame it up in any way. We have been working with some of the EDOs. When those investment inquiries come in, we help package them and present them. So I would, and I will allow time for questions certainly. But what I wanted to request from you today is perhaps you could have some discussion and then recognize this work as critical when you are planning within the municipality and setting your strategic priorities and supporting the regional work. And Evan is with me to speak to a, about a project that was recently funded for us. And it's about addressing one of those foundational issues around the grid capacity. And we're looking at an energy, regional energy planning piece. So Evan can give you a little bit more detail around that one as well. So maybe I can open up to some... Do we have time for some questions now?
I don't have a question, but I do have a compliment. And I think it's absolutely amazing what the REN is accomplishing. This brochure is fantastic. So I guess we have to give some thanks to our CAO for putting some of this work together. And I thank you for your efforts and everything that you do. It's really exciting.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Counselor, question.
Thank you. There's no doubt in my mind of what the REN is doing is a great job. However, I did miss one industry that we haven't, that you haven't considered, was the farming industry. As we know, the so-called dairy farms have dwindled from 40-odd in our Yarmouth County area down to only two. But there's other opportunities out there. Like we have the strawberry farms that are there. We got the blueberry farms. We're into the haske berry now. There is some great vineyards being established. So I wonder how, and there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of acres of undeveloped farmland that maybe should be looked into, number one. Number two, the forestry section. Yes, we do have a lot of forestry, but we do have a small mill up in Carlton. Carlton, where is it? Carlton?
Carlton's Mill.
And they need to, you know, it'd be nice to see them be, have some type of encouragement or opportunities to increase their production. Because from my understanding, talking with some foresters, that, you know, they have a two-hour drive to Greenville to Greenfield? Greenfield, Greenfield, to a sawmill. So seems to me, we have, again, abundance of forestry around here that we could probably tap into. And, but in saying that, and I know some people are not going to like this, but we also got to find a way to manage the forest properly so that we don't get in situations where we have the big forest fires that are, that go out of control in B.C. and California and whatnot because there's no forest management in there. All the trees allowed to die, the brush is there. There's no way to get to fight those fires. And lastly, you know, proper insect control. Whether we like it or not, insects do devastate a lot of our forests, not only in Nova Scotia, but across Canada, right? You know, we should have some realities there. But those are my two main concerns on the forestry and farming that should be really, I think should be looked into. But you guys are doing a great job in, you know, the immigration program. That's another question I was going to, is that working, that working out very well?
We're beginning to see some employers who have been designated through, with the REN's assistance, arrive at a point where there actually are immigrants coming into the region now. So we're seeing some families arrive, and we hope that that's just going to increase. So yeah, we've been doing well with the designations, but until we see the people arrive...
It takes time.
That's the important part. So yeah, it's been taking, it's taking time. But now that it's started to happen, it will continue. So yeah, and the Atlantic Immigration Pilot, so far, I think it's had an impact on Western Nova Scotia. So yeah, we hope to see it continue.
All right.
Yeah.
Take free time.
On your points, I think the first one about the farming potential, one of the things that we do have included in the value proposition as well is the work that was done by the CBDCs, the Micro Climate Data Study. So a lot of that information has been incorporated. So some of those opportunities are, this body of work is so rich. There's so much information. It depends who's making the inquiry. So the good thing is, we're able to access it. But I would also say that the kind of conversation that we just had, that's what's really key and why we want to continue working even more closely with your staff so we can, you know, reciprocate in terms of information and make sure that we're hitting on what we need to be hitting on. So that's one of the reasons why we bring the work forward. And the other piece about forestry is that part of what we're hoping to do as well, and Evan's going to be talking about that project, is through some of the district heating opportunities, the biomass, that we can be looking at perhaps creating some local markets for the forestry industry as well. So that's part of it, so.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Counselor cutting in.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, as the rest of the counselors did, about the, about how fantastic the brochure and so forth is. Presentation was fantastic. It's also nice to see, I'm looking forward to hearing about the energy storage solutions potentially because I understand the capacities are going up. So that may be a way around not having transmission lines to use the power locally. So I'm hopeful. So I'm looking to hear more about that technology. So thank you.
Any more?
So I have a presentation as well. I just forwarded it to Liz. I'm not sure if you got it through email.
And it's linked, and you all have it in your mail box.
Just in case you want to follow along. Okay, you want me to start? So the Western REN region recently responded to a program that was put out by the Department of Energy and Mines called Low Carbon Communities. So what this program was hoping to do as goals, it was hoping to lower greenhouse gas emissions within Nova Scotia, but also to identify low-carbon and clean-energy projects within the province that might be applicable for the upcoming Build Canada Fund. So just trying to make sure that we're ready when those funds are able to be tapped into, that we have projects that are geared up and ready to go. So on the energy planning rationale slide, what we know, you can go on Nova Scotia Power's website and look at what the transmission lines in the province look like. And our section of the province has some of the poorest transmission lines that are out there. So they're at 69 kilovolts. And if you look at other areas in the province, they can get as high as 345. And what that means is that there's enough space on the grid that multiple businesses and industries will have nothing to worry about. Whereas in our region, because of that limited capacity, sometimes, you know, saying like, oh, we want to expand our business. Is there enough energy available? The answer might be no. So just thinking about that, right? And as I understand, there's a poor business case right now for Nova Scotia Power. Do you upgrade the lines? It's a little bit of a chicken-and-the-egg thing. Do they upgrade the line? Do they upgrade the lines knowing that businesses would use that power, but maybe down the line, or do they wait until there are so many businesses that are looking to tap into more energy that they then make that upgrade? So there are alternative solutions. One piece there is that you can look at energy efficiency, acknowledging that businesses, institutions, municipal buildings and households, et cetera, they could all benefit from lowering their own energy requirements. And that saves them money, but it also takes energy load off of the grid that can therefore be distributed to other businesses or households. Another piece too is that there could be more local generation of power and we do know that there's a lot of opportunities with solar, tidal and wind energy in this end of the province as well as biomass. And the only issue is, is that due to the constraints of the grid, any energy that would be generated here might not be able to be transmitted elsewhere or sold to another part of the province or the country or even the United States. So one opportunity there, as Trevor just mentioned, is energy storage. And that could be anything from batteries to pumping water uphill so that later on, when you need that energy later, it comes back down and it's been some turbines. And what that could potentially do is if there's a cluster of businesses that has high energy needs and you have local energy storage from green energy sources and maybe that energy was generated at non-peak hours, you then have more energy that's in the local grid that could be tapped into at those peak demand hours. So the work that we're looking to do, we did make a submission to this Low Carbon Communities project and we're trying to increase, what we're looking at doing is the town of Bridgewater had a community energy investment plan, so they found that in 2016, the energy costs for the town, and that includes all businesses and institutions within, was roughly 89 million. And they projected a 32-year plan over which time they could, they expected that that energy demand would go from 89 million to 206 million. And over those 32 years, if they were to enable some energy efficiencies, they could save as much as $2 billion to keep in the local economy. So they had three strategies for that. One was energy efficiency, one was community-scale energy systems, and a smaller component was clean and active transportation. So for the Western region, we wanted to take that community energy investment plan that Bridgewater developed and scale it up to be regional in nature. And we want to get a sense of what the recent energy usages were within our region, get a sense of how much money is being spent on energy and how much could potentially be saved over a 32-year period or something of that nature. So looking at getting some models for present usage, what that usage would look like in 2050 if we changed nothing, and what it would look like if we did enact some efficiencies or have some local energy generation. On the next slide there, Western REN municipal staff deliverals. So in order to get that information, we would need to spend some staff time both at the Western REN and ideally at the municipal units as well. So getting a sense of what our current greenhouse gas inventory is as a baseline, looking at energy use at municipal buildings and within the business community, and also transportation and solid and liquid waste would be another stream within which there's some potential to identify some efficiencies. So the Western REN would be reaching out to businesses and institutions within the region to get some data. There's also a number of data that's available on aggregate from various sources within the province such as Clean Nova Scotia. And then as well, maybe the public work staff would have some insight into what spends they've had and what transportation costs may be. As far as the deliverals that we would be expecting of a consultant, so we did release a request for proposals yesterday on Nova Scotia procurement, and that was to find a consultant that could do the following. One is find a baseline from the data that we're able to collect and project that business-as-usual scenario, but then also to identify some potential low-carbon futures for the region and show us an actions matrix that would help us to get to those. Provide some information for the modeling of retrofitted buildings, potential building codes for new buildings, and identify renewable energy generation locally, some different opportunities. As well, looking at modeling actual sites for green energy generation, potential energy storage sites, areas where there's maybe a cluster of businesses or institutions where district energy or district heating might make sense. And then to put the whole thing together into a plan that we can all action hopefully in the future. So as far as who benefits, Angelique mentioned earlier, the forestry industry, they might not have a large local market for the low-grade woods and any green energy or biomass solutions may be able to tap into some of the low-value wood, which would therefore benefit the local sector. It would also, if there's enough green energy projects within the region, it may get to that critical mass where industries and green energy companies are able to set up a local shop for the servicing of equipment. Residents could expect lower usage within their homes and therefore have some cost savings. Same thing goes for businesses. You know, we'd also be in a position where we could potentially say, the grid's at capacity, but we're generating enough local energy that we could allow for this much extra usage within this area or so forth. So we'd have a better sense of what the capacity is and could be, and that would be useful for business and investment attraction. The municipalities themselves would also potentially save money through any efficiency programs identified and institutions within the region. But also Nova Scotia Power, who, you know, maybe the grid is at capacity here, but if we're able to generate more electricity in here and then they're able to provide more customers with electric, heating or whatnot, then they themselves would benefit by having more customers. So we're not necessarily trying to work at cross purposes here, but hopefully all together. And the next step is to award the RFP to an energy consultant. And on my own side of things, I've been looking at all of the municipal integrated community sustainability plans and I'm just trying to document all that up into one situational analysis, looking at the municipal strategic plans and budgets as well, and then we're going to get into data collection. So that's everything. If there's any questions.
Any questions? Very good. Oh, sorry. I don't know, I must be having trouble, you're on councillor.
I'm on?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. You brought up the subject of biomass, which I don't think is a bad thing, but I wonder what the results are from up in the Port Hawkesbury, Cape Breton area, whether they're doing the biomass and whatnot. From rumors that I hear, they're just taking everything. And that's not a good thing, you know, so I don't know if, you know, a situation like that should be looked at before that is done down here, because, you know, we certainly want to do a proper forest management, as I had mentioned earlier, so.
And I think I would refer back to the sustainability piece that we've integrated into our value proposition and the importance of that, so those are the kinds of things, yeah, that would be good.
Any more of the questions up committee? Any questions from staff? Comments?
Just to continue to be in dialogue as the RFP process comes to an end and you have a more definitive role for the municipal staff to partner with you on that, just let us know.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Angelique. Evan, I appreciate you coming in. Councillor question, could you go? Oh, it's off. All right, pull my agenda back up here. It's one remaining item on our agenda, if I'm not mistaken. Item 7.2, Mariner Centre project. We all have in front of you what was requested. We have here a letter from the town of Yarmouth dated February 15th, 2019. What is the wish as a councillor? Councillor, councillor Durkey, I seen lights going off and I didn't know where to go. It's a competition, I think. Councillor Durkey.
Thank you very much. I am thrilled that we have possible opportunity to move forward with the expansion of the Mariner Centre. I am 100% in favor with putting together a steering committee to look at what it is that we want to move forward with and possible funding partnerships. And I would also like to say that I am quite interested in being on that steering committee and look forward to working with all three councils to bring this to fruition.
It's been a long, long and winding road to get here, but having said that, I'm pleased that we are here. And it seems like the three councils are, I'm hearing that, you know, generally, and every councillor has to speak for themselves, but are generally in favor of moving ahead with the project. And we've been talking about it for years, so certainly we've been, we've been planning to spend, spend on a project like this in terms of capital and it's very much supported by the, by the public and it will be a great asset for Yarmouth and surrounding areas. Our three municipal units are stronger together certainly, and I think that we can use this as an example of a fantastic partnership for economic growth, health, all those types of things. So I'm pleased that we're here and certainly looking forward to the formation of that steering committee so we can get the details ironed out and certainly have the wonderful facility put in place as soon as possible. And I know timelines will be daunting, but I think working together will be up to the challenge, so thank you.
Councillor question. Excuse me. I too am in favor of the project. However, I just want to make sure, because I lived in the day of, when Yarmouth got on board to try to get the new arena done and the controversy they went through and the uphill battles they went through to get part of what they, what they have now. But what I don't want to see, I don't want to see some nitpicking going on that, that will have to add on to this expansion like they did with the Mariner Centre last time. I like to see, and you talk about, what was the word? Building committee, not building committee? What would you say, Patty?
Steering committee.
Steering committee. What I like to see on the steering committee, I would like to see actual hands-on people who know the business, know the building and stay away from the, you know, I mean, you know, the sky's not the limit on what we can spend there for sure, but let's do it efficiently and effectively and not so much politically. You know, it's needed. I think we have a number of individuals out there that could be set on that steering committee that know what is needed and how it should be done, and I think that's the type of direction we should be taking, because I don't want to, at the end of the day, saying that the expansion is done, oh gee whiz, well, we should have put this on there, now we have to raise up more money, we have to, you know, let's do it, let's do it right. And there's a lot of energy-efficient things out there that can be done that would, I don't think has been looked into the first type of plan, but, and I think a real, a real cost, a cost plan has to be, has to be brought forward so we'll know all the items. We don't want to be cutting something off. The old saying is, we don't cut off your nose, it's to spite your face or any rate. So I'm really interested in the project, but I want to make sure the project is going to be done right and the proper steering committee is in place to give us the best information that we can have so we can make a good and objective decision.
Yes. I'm very pleased to see that this is going forward. I think the three councils are supporting this and plus, like councillor Cunningham said, the public also. I remember that way back when the schools started having gyms in this area and hearing my grandparents say, you know, why do they need gyms in the, in the school? We went to school to learn, we didn't go to play, you know? And we've come a long ways and I feel that that's the same thing with the Mariner Centre. We need that, we really bad, it's our future. And I'm in support of that 100%, 150%. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments from council? Well, I have a couple. I want to first put forward this caveat that I am pleased, extremely pleased, that the town of Yarmouth has finally decided to move forward with a regional project that all three councils sat with and discussed over the past couple of years. As a matter of fact, it's been three years since we've had this, the study done on the possible expansion of what it looks like at the Mariner Centre. What I am not happy with, and I'm going to make this very clear, what I'm not happy with is what the speed of what things happen. I'm very concerned that, number one, that I personally and the warden did not find out about any possible funding opportunities, I believe it was on a Friday. Did not receive any confirmation from our MLA and MP. The warden has contacted them. He has yet to receive any conversations from the MP, but I do know that he has tried to contact him. I'm very concerned that the town decided to move forward and almost put our necks on the line that following Monday morning, called a special council meeting. You've got to remember here first councillors, that we are a 50/50% funding partner of the Mariner Centre as it currently stands and we did not receive any real information. It, things are coming very fast and I said this at the very start, I am totally in favor of moving forward with this project. I'm concerned about what's the speed and the way that it's happened. I'm very concerned about that. We are supposed to work together as a team, as partners. If the mayor, absolutely, if she found out about a funding partner, at least she should have called and not called a special meeting for us to find out, most of you councillors in the media of all places. Think about that. I'm all in favor of working in partnerships, but we've got to remember, there's another person who spends 50% of public funds.
We're 50% owners, but we have a three-way partnership.
Yes, yes, absolutely. We are 50% ownership. I think we all should have come to the table first and discussed some preliminary discussions. There's been a lot of discussion on what this expansion looks like. We're still undecided on that. I do commend the town, however, that they are finally coming forward and coming up to the table, that an operational agreement be struck, absolutely. There was a meeting in nine, which maybe not a lot of you councillors know, but happened back in the end of August. I was actually away for that meeting, but they discussed these things at this time. But for whatever reason, their feet got drugged, they didn't move forward on it. Now we're finding ourselves in a situation where the town's proposing that we have a lot of this stuff together by June the 30th. That's a lot of work. We have to make sure that when we do this, we do it right and we do what the municipality and district Yarmouth residents want. I don't want to cut corners, I want to make sure this building is right-sized and exactly what we all have. what we all have. But even though I'm disappointed that we were, what I consider ill-informed, I'm very happy that we are moving forward. I'm very excited to see that there's suggestions out there to put forward a steering committee. We have to make sure that we do the preliminary work, and I believe that there's a recommendation coming to council next week in a regular council meeting that we meet with the mayors, wardens, deputies, and CAOs to hammer out these concerns and the way that the committee's going to be formed. I believe there should be elective representation, I believe there should be organizations that could possibly be there. I do believe, I've had a lot of expressed interest from people who's worked on large construction projects. I believe there should be public input. I don't believe this committee should be very large. These are my own personal opinions, but there'll probably be some recommendations brought forward when the mayors, wardens, deputies, and CAOs do meet. But I am very pleased that we are moving forward. I see everyone's, lights are flashing. I do not mean to be mis-spirited, I'm just very concerned about the way that this all come about, but I am extremely happy that we are moving forward. I'm not sure whose mic is flashing. First, counselor question.
Thank you. You mentioned a couple of points. Number one, as being a 50% partner in the ownership of the Mariner Center, I totally agree with you that if it's going to be 50-50, we have to know what the heck is going on at any one time, and no one partner can step up and say, "We're going to do this," without talking to the other ones first. Number two, you mentioned that in a steering committee, that I believe, and I stated this earlier, we need the people on that steering committee who know what is needed, and that's why you need representation from the Mariner Center, you need representation from the Y, and you need representation from the Curling rink. Those three, what am I looking for, the word? Groups are critical in making sure we're going to go in the right direction and spending the money in the right way and giving us the information that we need to make that decision. I just can't stress that enough, and if they're not represented on there, I'll be really, really upset.
Counselor Durkey.
Thank you. First of all, a letter was sent out saying that, you know, I just want to confirm that there were rumors that came from community members with regards to whether there was money available, and I'm aware from a letter that we received that the town confirmed the rumors and then, and on that Friday night, a letter was sent to the warden informing him about this information. Unfortunately, we did not get that information back on that Friday, and that's why I believe that we found out, I found out on Facebook, that the town was meeting. So, there was information that was sent. The second thing I'd like to mention is that in the letter that was sent from the town, the steering committee, I believe, looks like it's looking at an operational agreement with the municipalities, a capital and ownership agreement with partners, and that municipal funding of operations and capital contribution between municipal partners. So, this original steering committee appears to me that it should be council-based, as in the owners, and then after that, look at who they bring on board for the decisions to make with regards to expertise in building that expansion. At this point, it says, "Please advise, this is the letter from the town, if your council agrees to participate and we can have our CAOs work with us to coordinate an initial meeting, I would be prepared to recommend to the regular council meeting that we make a motion to agree to participate and let's get the foundation set from the direction of where we're going."
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, counselors. So, for the benefit of the public, you can go on our website and link to the letter with the invitation from the Town of Yarmouth that we did receive. And just for clarity, is that there's a suggestion on a mandate for the beginning work of that steering committee, but the three partners who pay for the operations and the deficit financing haven't necessarily had that discussion together in a room. So, if you do view that document and you read some language in there around what the mandate could be, it's definitely not agreed upon or approved by any council at this point.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Here, finally.
You're electric.
I expressed my view in a harsh way the other day, but I'm going to try to express it again in a more silent way this time. Not silent, but anyways, this going to, I shouldn't say blame, but to go find fault somewheres, I think all this discussion, I agree with Deputy Mayor, Warden, and Lauren, but this should be called to a meeting with the three councils and express your views as CAO and Warden, or Deputy Warden. I don't think that to do this to the public, express your views like that, that's my opinion. I just, it should be closed doors when you express your views like that. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I know that this project can happen. What it looks like, I don't know. I'm a little concerned also. I did watch the town councils meeting here last Thursday night, and there's still, I'm not going to put a, say, resistance, but there's still some concern about, among some of the towns' counselors on where they're going. I watched them talk about the YMCA's inclusion in the Mariner Center, and there was some resistance. Counselor Jim LaCavera was very passionate. See, you've got to remember, too, we've all, when we decide we're going to move forward, I don't want no second thoughts. I want to move forward in a positive way. This is what I keep hearing from my residents. I've heard lots of suggestions. I'd like to see Curling there, I'd like to see Walking Track, I'd like to see a pool and possibly some other things. It's going to cost a lot of money, it's going to be a lot of work, but I will say this, I'm going to move forward with due diligence, keep an open mind, listen to other people's concerns, but I don't want to do this half, I want to do this full out, because this is a lot of money we're talking about. There's funding agreements that's got to be done. I did see in the town's recommendation that is online, that the town pays 28%, I believe the municipality share about a possible funding, this is only possible, it could be 40, over 40% for the municipality of Yarmouth. Out of a $10 million project, that's over $4 million for the municipality of Yarmouth. That's a lot of money. And at the end of the day, I answer to the ratepayers of the municipality, so, like I said, I'm looking forward to moving forward in this project, and let's get it done. Counselor Cunningham.
Right, I think that we should all remember that there has been a study done to this point, and it does recommend some core pieces. We paid for that, our municipality did, along with the town, so forth, so, and our partners participated in that, and it does provide quite a bit of guidance around what may come to fruition out there. Of course, it's not, the last word sort of sits with the three councils. So, I guess, in advance, we're talking about the next council meeting, but in advance, I'm expecting that maybe the CAOs will have a conversation, the wardens, and the mayor will have a conversation perhaps and can give us a little bit of guidance about, I'm not certain, maybe we could ask the CAO for comment about timelines, about, I guess, in principle, it sounds like we're all in agreeance or in agreement, but I guess, time's of the essence. You know, we'd like to get this project on the go and certainly get the steering committee up and running as quickly as possible. But I guess, how that is constituted isn't clear from the letter, so I'm just wondering if we'd have a little bit more information at the next council meeting about potentially what that steering committee may look like.
If I can, Mr. Chairman. So, I guess, when you uncover a potential funding source to the magnitude of what's been uncovered here and your window is as narrow as it is, I understand that process is compressed, sometimes we might get things out of order. And so, I hear your concerns, Counselor Cunningham. I think to the mayor's point and to both of the warden's points is, until the mayors and wardens and deputies and CAOs have a discussion, we really don't know what we're going to recommend to you in terms of the steering committee. So, I would suggest that that's probably the next step, is that that group get together and have a conversation that they haven't had the privilege or opportunity to have yet, and kind of, okay, take a breath, take a beat. What is step one? Where are we going to start? And then, information will then go back to the respective councils in terms of how to liaise with our management authority as well as other stakeholder groups.
So, I guess, I'm looking for a recommendation, move this forward to council. Consensus is moving it forward to a regular council meeting, which is actually next week, yeah, where we had the snowstorm last week and the meeting was canceled, and we'll hopefully have some more information. And I do want to apologize to anyone that's listening, that I may seem a little bit strong, but I'm still legitimately upset that we weren't in the loop in the way that things are moving forward, but I do realize that funding projects like this do not come very often, and I'm a man of my word, I said I'm willing to support an expansion, and let's get on it. Counselor LeBlanc.
I think the only thing that I'm asking for Deputy Warden is to listen to the other side, please.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, that's all, you know.
It works both ways.
Yeah.
All right, since there's no more agenda items, I guess consensus to...
So, we had recess for in camera. Mr. Chairman, what are your wishes?
I guess we'll go for recess for five minutes, since we still have one more item to do in camera, and we'll adjourn in our in-camera portion of the meeting in five minutes. So, consensus to adjourn? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.